Patricia Tam?
Yes.
Robin Stevens?
Yes.
Deborah Neri?
Yes.
Lisa Brithin?
Here.
Rachel Weis?
Present.
Kathy Ko John?
Yes.
Maureen Nichols?
Yes.
John Whittle?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloomstedt?
Present.
All present.
Thank you Denise. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of this room on the south side of the door. Live web streaming will be available through the state Board of Education website. Board members, please engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you are done speaking. And please, turn off your cell phones at this time. Thank you very much. Commissioner Bloomstedt, do you want to give us a report and an agenda overview, please?
Just actually first, I believe we're going to turn the -- to the Strategic Planning Committee to go ahead and do a report. I'll come back to the broader report. Maybe I'll quickly say that there is the report on rules that you have on your device. There's rules 91, 92 that are awaiting adoption by the governor. And then we have a few rules, Rule 11, Rule 20, and Rule 23 that have had either are scheduled for adoption or we've had hearings. And we'll talk more, I know at least, about those as we go through the agenda. But with that, I'd actually go ahead and suggest the Strategic Planning Committee report.
Thank you Commissioner. Dr. Rachel Weis, please report on the Strategic Planning, Performance and Improvement Committee meeting, please.
Thank you President Whittle. Yes, it's my pleasure to, on behalf of the committee, give our report. And we are going to change the order of our report and start with what would be Item 3.7.F, which is a discussion item. And the reason we are going to start in that direction is because we have quite a few guests in our audience today that we greatly appreciate. This morning, the committee was able to hear an update from Skyler Central High School and the team on progress being made as a priority school. And we want to be certain that we have the time to provide an overview on the update and progress that is being made. And with that, I'm turning it over to Shirley Vargas and to Lane Carr, who will come up and will start our process to talk about the progress with Skyler Central High School as a priority school. Thanks. Shirley, thanks. Lane?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Shirley Vargas, the new administrator for the Office of Coordinated School and District Support. So, thank you. And with me?
I'm Lane Carr. You all know me.
I actually am going to call up school principal from Skyler Central High School, Stephen Grammer, and the assistant principal, Jim Kasek, to join me at the area here. And you'll see that we do have a large team back here with us. Also with Skyler Central High School, we have Board President, Rich Braback. We have Superintendent Hazing, as well as Dr. Joey Lefdal, who is the Director of Student Services at the school. So, what we're here today is to provide you all with an update on the Priority School Progress Plan for Skyler Central High School. Three quick objectives is just to remind and ground ourselves on the statutory requirements for priority schools. Go ahead and quickly, briefly, update you all with their priority status and allow the school an opportunity to share some of those updates and then answer any questions you all may have. So, some quick requirements. We all know that priority schools, at the time of designation, must be at the lowest performance category, which for us is Needs Improvement. No less than three schools may have the designation, and priority schools remain with that until they are removed by the State Board. And one clear reminder, which was why we're here today, is that we -- the State Board must annually review any progress for the school that's in priority status. So, as a quick reminder, we started with three schools, Druid Hill, Loop County, and Santee, and now we have Skyler, present.
So, just as a quick overview of some of the quantitative data and some of the progress that has been made, we see this classification and this information is all available on the Nebraska education profile. But you can see this last year in December, Skyler Central High School was classified as Needs Improvement, and that is, that school is couched within the district that is classified as good. The NSCAS achievement data that you see right there under Performance is the ACT at the high school level. So, you can see those percentages, as well as the graduation rate for Skyler Central High School. And we'll give you just a moment to take a peek at that. And again, all of this information and the data is, in greater depth, is available on our NEP. What you don't see here is, go ahead and switch for me. What you don't see here is information on their English learners. So, 23% of Skyler Central High School, about 130 or so students, are classified as English learners. And so, we wanted to share with you some of the data on the progress towards English language proficiency. So, while there are about 130 English learners at Skyler, that 105 number that you see right there represent the students who have taken the ALPA-21 at least two times. So, our metric in AQuest is, are students making progress towards English language proficiency? So, we have to have two separate, at least two data points, to be able to check for that progress. So, of those 105 students that have been making, that took the ALPA-21 at least twice, we see that 16 are on track for proficiency. And there are 21 students who, while they're behind, they are still making progress towards proficiency. So, we wanted to make sure we shared those numbers with you as well.
So, then, we also want to remind you that our progress plan currently is grounded on the three levers for highly effective schools: clear compliance direction, student and staff culture, and instructional leadership. And what all of you should have in front of you is a qualitative review of the Priority School Progress Plan for the school. And the qualitative review is done annually by the school and our consultant. And the rubric comes from the Nebraska Framework for Continuous Improvement. And it's used to assess the level of implementation that, and of progress made for their goals and strategies to reach those goals. So, it starts with not yet evident, emerging, operational, and highly functional. And what we see for this past school year, with the goals that have been drafted and have been in place at Skyler for their Priority School Progress Plan, 60% of those goals are at emerging, while 20% are not yet evident and another 20% are operational. And the strategies that have been created in order to reach those goals, 61% of those strategies are at emerging. And 22% are not yet evident and 17% are operational. So, we wanted to share with you just where the school is in terms of implementing strategies to reach those goals, where they are at the end of their year one as, in priority status. So, what we want to do now is just provide the school team a brief moment to provide you with some highlights from their presentation from earlier today around the progress that has been made and some of the next steps that they're looking forward to implementing in year two. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Grammer and Mr. Kasek to join the conversation.
I'll go ahead and get started. First of all, thank you for your time. I'm going to call your attention to a diagram that looks like this, and it's up there. This is an illustration of the things that we do. In a short period of time, I can't tell you everything about Skyler, but I think this is a good diagram that kind of tells you what we're about. At the foundation of our systems is culture and climate, where we use Capturing Kids' Hearts, as well as APL Behavioral Model and Thought Exchange to get input from our stakeholders. And our three pillars, certainly the very important one in the middle is the learning that our students do, is based from the Marzano Instructional Model. And we have college and career readiness standards, as well as core courses and CTE pathways that we're evaluating through revision. We have a lot of support within that, our EL programs, special education, the work we do with our service unit, as well as NDE grants, and our Warrior Achievement Center, which helps students get caught up once they fall behind. And all of that, then, is filtered through our assessment pillar, which uses those assessments, the NSCAS, the ACT, MAP, ALPA-21, as well as STAR 360. And those are all supported with our strategic plan, which has all of our next steps on that. And all of those support the ultimate goal of student success. So, that's kind of a quick visual of what we do and how all these programs work together for the success of our students.
Mr. Stevens, good to see you.
Thank you, Stephen.
If you want to know any stories about Robin, I'd be glad to share with you.
Don't have that much time.
You can make time.
It'll take longer than I thought. Well, appreciate the time. Thank you for having us earlier and tell our story of who we are and the process we're going through. One thing I think is very important to remember from our report is culture and climate. That's the foundation. And the other thing is attendance. If you're truant, have behavior problems, not feeling like you're wanted, then you're not going to do well in school. We've got to break that barrier and tell people that we shake their hands, we tell them good morning, we're glad you're here. Even if they've been late 10 times before that, we still capture their heart. The next steps are very important, because that's where we're going from this process to the new process. And the thing I like to stress most is the strategic plan. When this got put in six years ago, it gave us the direction to go, and it renewed and evolved all time. So, the teachers at one time said, we want to see administrators in the classroom more often. This year, we were in the classroom 272 times. That's a very big number, because before, it probably got in there 20, 30 times. So, we're in the right direction, we're going the right way. I like our new next steps with the ELLs, class and students. Dr. Lefdal's going to take that program over, and I'm sure we'll have great things from there. So, if you have any questions?
So, before we jump into the next question, to the question segment, really quickly to bookend our presentation here, some of the progress and next steps that have been happening at Skyler Central High School. What we are seeing here is just a continuation of the implementation of progress plan and making some refinement specifically to the goal that refers to English learners. And like Mr. Grammer and Mr. Kasek already spoken about, in relation to those programmatic changes, come with the hiring from Dr. Lefdal and having him onboard as a Director of Student Services and really providing some new direction for the school there. And what he's also focusing on is this newcomer program, as well as using a data-based platform such as Elevation, as well as some of the things that they discussed earlier around ILET as well, really thinking about what is a more comprehensive approach to supporting the success of English learners at the school. The other piece that we have here that was talked about earlier was Capturing Kids' Hearts and the APL model, and thinking about how we're supporting our students socially and emotionally, especially since they're having, they have a population of English learners that come at times with limited or interrupted formal education. So, really thinking about how they're providing well-rounded supports for those students. And lastly, one of the things that we've implemented specifically this year with all of our priority schools has been quarterly check-ins. So, bringing our board president, the school leadership team, local school board president, excuse me, the leadership team at the school, along with the superintendent, to ensure that while there's a strategic plan in place and there are the processes in place, that we're also meeting the expectations of what it means to be in priority status, so that there is a clear expectation that people are meant to be present, there's clear communications, and that we're ensuring that there's cohesion towards a common goal of improving instruction and learning at the school level. So, with that, we'll turn it over to you all if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. And before we turn it over to questions, again, I just want to thank you for sharing with the committee. We had much more time this morning with the committee, and we're able to get much broader depth of all of the great things that are happening at Skyler and knowing that there's a lot of good things. We did also spend a little bit of time in knowing that we need to continue that focus in on English learners, as we've talked about that, and that that's an area that really brought us to this point as a priority school status, and that with the plan that's in place and continuing to move in that direction is a critical piece that we'll continue to look at as we move forward. And I also just want to add that I do appreciate when you went through the self-evaluation of the progress plan to look at progress. I think you really did do a good job in saying, okay, we know these are some areas we need to keep working on. And I think we appreciate that as well. And so, again, I will now turn it over to any either colleagues who were in the committee this morning or other colleagues. Do you have questions?
Question.
Okay, Deborah?
I just wanted to understand the student population a little bit better. Out of your English language learners, how many different languages are there?
We have 11 different languages and 16 cultures.
Wow.
In a Class B school in mid-Nebraska, 600 kids.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions from board members?
Are you also providing some engagement for parents when you talk about so many different languages and cultures? Are there ways that the parents can participate as well?
Well, this past year, we had our parent-teacher conferences, and what we've gone to, first of all, is have food at parent-teacher conferences. Not only food, but cultural food. We had the African group showing some, we had our different Hispanic groups. So, they actually called us a hetero kind, because we did it last year, and they said, hey, are you doing it again? And we got more people coming to cook and stuff.
Oh, good.
And when they do, it's basically gone within the first half hour, so if you don't get there early, you don't get anything, so.
I would just add to that, we're also using Thought Exchange, which is a web-based system where they can interact and give us feedback, but it's also in their native language.
Okay.
So, Spanish and French, as well as English, of course. So, that's helping us reach those parents and getting, building that relationship as well.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
One of the questions that, you know, we shouldn't do a presentation and then have a little time and come back, because then, of course, we come up with some other questions. But one of the things we didn't talk about this morning that maybe you can allude to is, in essence, there's two plans. There's your strategic plan, and then there's your plan for your priority school plan. Can you talk a little bit about how you're integrating those two elements?
The strategic plan, when we first started working with, we've got the needs we have and everything. Then when priority came onboard, we realized a lot of these things are the same thing, just named differently. So, we're on the same, what's good about that is ESU, Discovery Ed, priority, and ourselves worked together to bring one strategic plan, and that's the one we have. So, it's integrated in there, not just two separate plans, more integrated one plan.
We've been doing our strategic plan for six years, so it's what our teachers are used to, our community is used to that. So, incorporating the priority plan within that, it works very well, because it just becomes a part of that plan.
So, and because we just received it this morning, and, you know, they keep us in meetings all day. So, do you have, I haven't had a chance to look at your strategic plan, but thank you for giving it to us. Do you have some specific goals in towards your EL population and really addressing that particular subset need?
We've added personnel. We've added personnel.
Okay.
Except Dr. Lefdal. We've hired a teacher to be part teacher, mostly dealing with counseling. We've got two other teachers, but we only had two last time, now we've got three or four. We have Elevation, we're going to put in place a new curriculum. And so, it's the start of right now with the program. It's just starting, we're just trying to figure out what direction we want to go with this.
And our newcomer program will also be new for next year. That's a big part of getting students into our system and being successful right away.
Okay, so you've incorporated that in your strategic plan, and also, perfect, great. I'll look at that one, if I have a chance. Thank you so much. Any other questions from, yes, Maureen?
I'd just like to share with the rest of my colleagues on the board that one of the things that the principal shared this morning was that, when it came to new hires for this next year, that they've been very upfront in letting them know of the long journey and the tough work ahead of them to be prepared for it. And I appreciated hearing that.
Thank you.
Kathy?
I thought it was important also, in relationship to that, I know there were a lot of concerns about hiring teachers. And it was, when I asked the question about, you did lose some teachers and, because they had some difficulties. But I thought it was very refreshing to hear that you were having high-quality teachers apply to your school, and that's what you were looking for, and that's what you were demanding. And I think that's a step in the right direction.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions that you may have for us, or any other additional?
No, we're pretty much brain drained right now.
It's been a long day. We feel the same as well. Well, thank you very much for, I'm sorry, Robin, I, well, and we know you have a tie. We'll talk later on hearing the rest of the story, but Robin, please.
Yes, two things. First of all, I saw the guys just before I came up here this afternoon, and they said that they finally are able to get south out of Skyler to come directly to Lincoln, so...
Otherwise, we wouldn't have been here.
Yeah. And you should know that this board, the commissioner, has kept us updated a lot on the flooding up in that area, and especially North Bend, but also Skyler as well. And then the other, as an observation, I really don't recognize these guys. Neckties? Come on!
It's not a clip-on either.
No, say hi to the good people of Skyler.
Thank you.
Well, I just have to add this, because I think my colleague, Mr. Stevens, would appreciate the approach you're taking to student discipline and development and using a hammer as part of the approach, but then having a problem-solving approach as well, so...
It's a small hammer.
And for those that, Mr. Kasek started as an industrial tech teacher, so we were able to have a little humor this morning also in our presentation.
You mentioned discipline, and I just thought, in your statistics in your presentation, three years ago, you had 76 incidents, and now you, this past year, you've had eight. And so, what you're doing is working, and I'm very glad to see that, and that you have a counselor that works with the students to get them where they need to be. So, thank you for working so hard on that.
Thank you.
There's going to be one more. It's going to keep going. I know how this works.
Kathy can talk forever.
Yeah. I'll keep it short again.
Sure.
At any rate, I just, I wanted to say to all of you from Skyler that know that everybody on this board is wishing for the very, very best for you and for your school system, and most of all, for your students. And to see your positive attitude and energy this morning and to hear your stories seemed to me that you had a focus on the right direction. So, I just want you to know that, to understand that our hearts are with you, and we've got your back. If you need some help, you come ask.
Sometimes, we forget about what's going on and how it's lasting. But one thing you can say for this, my superintendent is passionate about getting kids out of school. We, as administrators, are passionate, and we do the best we're, and our teachers. We went to a SIG grant meeting yesterday, and that's one thing we quoted on. We seem to have a lot of passion for what we're dealing with, and we have more challenging areas. Sometimes, I think you just lose that context of where you're at. So, we're passionate about what we do with our kids and getting them where they need to be.
And I think that goes to, you know, just one of the other pieces you shared, and you shared it again for the full, the amount of time that you're in the classroom now and the coaching in the classroom that you're doing. To think about going from 20 to 30 times in a classroom throughout the school building a year to 272 times, that's a real change in the processes that you've adapted within your school to make a difference.
Our teachers request to be in there early, and now they're saying, I wish you wouldn't be in here so much. Strategic plan said that's what we're going to do.
Well, thank you very much. If there's no other questions, again, thank you so much for being here most of the day. Good luck on getting home. You can go some other ways yet, so thank you again for being here.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Dr. Weis, if we could have you continue on with your action and discussion items, please.
I would be delighted to. Thank you. As soon as I get back to the schedule here. So, we'll now move to 3.7.A, which is an action item. And the committee had several different action items today. This first one is approve accreditation for schools for the 2019-20 school year in accordance with the provisions of Rule 10. And, there he is. Don, do you want to come forward and give us some background information on the documents that you shared with us and what you're proposing?
Well, what we're requesting is the annual accreditation for the Rule 10 schools that are on your list of schools that have met the requirements of assurance statement, and we do some accountability checks on schools, too. We've done about 30 of them this year. We randomly select schools that we're going to go visit. And then, this is also dealing with schools that have, that we have been working with on violations and developing plans and so forth. And so, at this time, we are recommending that you credit the schools that are on the list for Rule 10.
Thank you, Don. And this is an action item that will be brought forward tomorrow. Are there any questions at this time on the information that you've received on this list and the background for the rationale? Thank you, Don. If not, we will then move on to Action Item 3.7.B for discussion, and that's to approve the proposed modification request for Eustis Farnham Public Schools to modify the requirements found in Rule 10. And, Don, thank you for staying. And Commissioner may want to make a few comments on this as well. We had this item in front of us last month, and to be perfectly honest, the committee ran out of time. And our committee just had lots of items on the agenda, and so, we really weren't able to give it the time and discussion that it needed. And so, we moved it over to this month to review. So, Commissioner and Don, is there any comments that you'd like to make or introductions that you'd like to make?
Actually, I'll turn it over to Don, and then what I would just kind of echo what Rachel said, we ran out of a little bit of that time. But I did recommend the committee, and I believe the committee would recommend a direction on this as well. But I thank Mr. Stampy over there, who's the superintendent from Eustis Farnham. The modification request in front of you is somewhat an unusual thing. It's actually the first in my whole tenure as Commissioner of Education, so, and you asked good questions. Even our brief conversations from last time, is this the right way to handle it? We had to do a little more digging, but I do appreciate Steve Stampy bringing this back forward and kind of making sure that it's the appropriate type of request. So, I'll turn it over to Don for a little bit more background.
All right. Well, Eustis Farnham Public Schools has a need based upon their situation of where they live and availability of staff and so forth, that they would like their, recommending or would like to submit a modification to allow them to hire a media specialist that does not have the, what, according to Rule 10, proper endorsement. And so, in looking at their needs and talking to Mr. Stampy, we, he decided to submit a modification to, which would allow him to do this. We looked at whether it should be a waiver or if it should be a modification, and it was landed on that it should be a modification. And so, what we're bringing forward to you today, and I do appreciate that Steve is here, he has worked very well with us, and we've worked well with him in getting to this point of the modification, because like the Commissioner had stated, that we do not get a lot of modifications. And so, we're all kind of learning from the process, too. And so, with that, I would like to recommend to the board that they accept the modification.
Thank you, Don. And our committee discussed it briefly last month.
Yes.
Really briefly last month, and again, this month, and understand the need and the rationale, and also understand that, in some respects, our need to look at Rule 10, which will come up later in more depth, certainly plays into this, as well as understanding our diversity of needs across the state in a different way. Questions? Maureen?
Yes. I just wanted to add that something I learned in our committee meeting this morning, I initially thought that this would be just for a one-year situation, but it was brought to my attention that, no, that this modification with this particular individual would remain in place until, if by chance, rule anything in Rule 10 impacted or changed that modification-type situation. But as long as this individual is in place, it will remain. So, I appreciated learning that, and I'm glad I asked the question.
Any other comments or questions? If not, again, this will be on the agenda tomorrow for action. Oh, yeah, okay. Robin, comments?
I just, Eustis Farnham being in my district, and another close connection, I'm a graduate of Eustis. And anyway...
And, anyway, Steve first came to me and, and, you know, was concerned about this, and I could go through that whole process and the hard work that he went through, and also the hard work that Don's went through on this in, in trying to make this work. Just, so I understand, this is just a modification for Eustis Farnham, correct? Okay. And, and this process exists, and so I guess it's a, a process that works, and we just look forward to the good education that'll continue out at Eustis Farnham. It used to be the Tigers, then the Greenbacks, then the Knights, and now what are we?
We're gonna be the Bulls.
The Bulls. All right.
Okay.
So, thank you, Robin. If we need evidence on Robin's high school activities, we now know where to go. Thank you, Robin, for sharing that. Any other comments or questions on this item? Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
All right. And so tomorrow, we will take action on this item. We're now moving on to item 3.7 point C, and that also is an action item, and that action item is to designate Santee Elementary and Santee High School as priority schools and require a significant revision to Santee Middle School's Priority School Progress Plan. That's a mouthful. And again, Shirley, do you wanna, Lane still there?
Yeah, we're here.
Shirley and Lane, is there anything you wanna add? We did talk about this last month. I think the recommendation is, is pretty clear-cut. If board members have any questions, Shirley and Lane are here to answer any questions. If not, then this will be on the agenda for tomorrow for action. Moving on to 3.7 point D is an action item as well for tomorrow, and that's to remove priority school designation for Loop County Elementary School. And again, Shirley and Lane are here. If there's any questions, we discussed this last month and had the presentation last month from Loop County. Any questions or comments? Again, we applaud the work that's been done by Loop County, and we will move this to action on tomorrow's business meeting. The next item is 3.7 point E, and it's an action item, and it is to adopt proposed revisions to the 2017, 2000, through 2026 strategic vision and direction. You do have this updated strategic plan in your, in Spark, and I wanna thank board members across, all board members, the committee, as well as those of you that were not on the committee to provide input. I think our most recent input really shed a little light on, on how we needed to communicate, and I think it strengthened the document that's there. And so, if you have any questions about those proposed changes?
Just a comment, I just wanna thank the committee and your leadership on this and openness, and, and that's tough work, too.
Well, Robin, I really wanna thank you for the early childhoodness that we kinda had on that. I think that was a great catch of some language that really strengthened the document, so thank you, Robin. So, again, thank you all, and thanks to the committee, which is Maureen, Patsy, and Lisa for their time on, on this, and we will bring that forward for action tomorrow. And with that, this committee report is done.
Thank you, Dr. Wise. Thank you, Dr. Wise. We'll continue on with the standing committee reports. Patricia Timm, please. Oh, you wanna go back? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll continue my report. I always had more, you knew that. First of all, I missed the consent agenda process side of the equation, so just as a reminder, you have a pink form if there's an item that you would like to have for separate consideration. Just fill out that pink form and make sure to put it in, in the box in front of Scott Summers there. Next up, I wanna do a little bit of an overview of our progress on Rule 10. So, Don Losky, there's certain people that are popular today, Lane, Shirley, and Don Losky, I think, yeah. But the, I actually wanna set this up a little bit, it's probably appropriate, it comes after the Strategic Planning Committee report. Normally, the Rule 10 work right now has been within that committee, and there's been actually a lot of, a lot of staff work to establish some, you know, what's the feedback from stakeholders and, and the engagement that we've done so far, and I just thought it was appropriate to give the full board a report, and we frankly really didn't have time in the committee to, to give much of a report on Rule 10 at this point in time. But this information is really, so the full board has a sense of, of the discussions that we've had so far, the feedback that we've had. We have a Rule 10 advisory committee that met, has met twice, actually, this, this spring and recently, I forget the exact date, within the last couple of weeks, anyway. So, the, the information that Don's gonna present is, is pretty fresh from that standpoint. I anticipate we'll use this information and other information to dive into a little bit more work with the committee this summer. In fact, we identified some possibilities of how we can keep looking at it, and actually, when I mentioned that to Don, Don said, "Good." We could, there's a lot more conversations that we need to have with, with the board committee on this front. But I'll turn it over to Don for, to start the presentation, and then at the end, we'll, we'll probably take questions if there are in any way, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Blomsted. I am Don Losky, Director of Accreditation here for the State Department of Education, and I'm here to kinda give you a brief overview of where, what life has been like in this revision of Rule 10, with an opportunity for some questions and your feedback at the end of this presentation, because it's hard for us to move forward without really getting the feedback and what direction the state board would like us to move. So, with that, I just, this is just kind of a brief overview of what's been happening in our lives since the, since the September board retreat, and where we had the opportunity to spend a day together, talking about Rule 10 and what that may look like and so forth. And so, we, we, as NDE members, had an opportunity to kinda participate and observe some of the, the work of the state board as they were moving forward and having that conversation. So, since that time, we kinda feel like that was kind of our kickoff for Rule 10, and we've done a lot of things. We've had project charter meetings, we've had state accreditation committee meetings, our last one was May 15th. We've had an extra, after-action meeting to discuss what did we hear at the board retreat, and then we've had many revisions that we've looked at, we've had rough drafts, we've had input from stakeholders, from superintendents, from schools, and I'm gonna kinda give you of, an overview of all of that information that we have been receiving since the September meeting. I would focus mostly on the numerous conversations, because this seems to be our conversation among my team and among NDE, is we spend a lot of time talking about Rule 10 and what, what changes do we need to make now, because we do believe that since 2015, there, this is the time and there, for us to make some changes to help our schools, just like, just like with Mr. Stampy. I think that there are some things that we can do in the current Rule 10 to make life better, easier, but better for kids using Rule 10. So, with that, I heard that you guys kinda wanted to know where, what our timeframe was and where we were headed, and so this kinda starts with June 6th, with this, which is today, where we're gonna try to get some input from the state board, and then basically from now till October of 2020, we have time set aside to collect information, do drafting, put that information out, do some more tweaking, get that information back out, do some additional drafting, have more conversations, more conversations, and getting feedback from individuals until we hit the October 1st, 2020, is our, our plan. I think that's pretty aggressive, when you look at the scope and the size of Rule 10, but we, that has been our focus, and that is what we are certainly going to try to do, is to have, we keep that site, we keep that date in sight as all the work that we are doing. So, you all have this PowerPoint, so you can, you can read the information that is listed. Most of this is taken from our project charter that was created to help guide us, and this has been a new process for us, too, is working with project management, but it does help us kinda focus and know where we are headed with, with the project that we are working on. So, as part of the retreat, we were able to take the information and kinda synthesize it with the help of Ryan and, and on our team and the commissioner, and kinda come up with some highlights of things that we heard from the state board at the retreat. First one, review and update the annual process and the continuous improvement cycle. To us, that's just kind of an update. You're looking at it, what is currently the process for an annual review, or how do we get schools to the point where we're recommending them, as we did today, for the Rule 10 schools? So, reviewing, update the annual process and the continuous improvement cycle. It's also looking at the continuous improvement cycle from the data collection, you know, the four wheels of the continuous improvement cycle, ending with the visit itself, the onsite visit. General compliance should be moved out of Rule 10. We are in the process of looking at what is required by statute and what is not required by statute in Rule 10. If you remember when I was here before with the history of rules, of not Rule 10, history of accreditation, there, rules get added to and added to, and there, you can read them, and you can understand that there was a reason why there's a history behind a lot of the rule. Some of them are based in statute, some of them are not. And so, we feel it's important to look at which ones are based on statutes and which ones are not, and then taking that information and deciding, do we keep, which, which do we keep in, do we take any out or not? But those are a conversation that we're having, along with looking for guidelines and approaches and how local school boards, this was an item that came up during the retreat, of how do we make school boards more committed, understanding, accountable for the work that is done in their schools and by their school personnel? 'Cause currently in Rule 10, it's pretty much just that they are, they have board policies, and they're, but we're gonna look at what else could that entail, entail as far as guidelines and approaches for school boards. The last three were linking AQuest Accountability System with Accreditation. We have a very strong AQuest Accountability System in Nebraska that Lane and Shirley are, have been working very hard with, and it would be, the, the question comes up, do we marry those two? Do we, how do they support each other? That's, that's a good question. Currently, accreditation, the accountability is in Rule 10, and so we do need to look at it, because it is a part of, of Rule 10 and part of accountability and accreditation. So, we will have to look at that process, too. Creating a multi-level system where there are levels of accreditation through performance, evidence-based accredited system. Currently, we do not have a level system. All schools are accredited. We do have a process for schools that can be on probation, or they can be non-accredited, that is currently in Rule 10, but we, it is very rare that that has actually been implemented. But, so there really is not a multi-level system. We have a system, unlike the accountability, where schools have different good, grade, and so forth. So, looking at multi-level systems, and what does that mean? And if you can remember from the history, that's been done in the past, too. There's been several times that they've had multi-level systems. And examine a method and procedure that would accredit each school and each school district across Nebraska. Currently, we accredit districts, we don't accredit individual school buildings. Accountability does individual school buildings and district. Accreditation is only districts at this time, and that's the way it is written into statute also. So, that's another thing that we would need to look at as we move through this. We did send out, some of the feedback that we have received so far is we sent a email out to all superintendents, public and non-public ESUs, NDE, with the process that we've established for collecting the information, and so, so far, you can see the numbers there, this is the responses that we have, have received so far, but these are some of the highlights from, from that information that, that we have received. A lot of discussion about e-learning days, so I think these are areas that, as we start to look at the body of Rule 10, we will need to look at e-learning and what does it allow, what does it not allow, what do schools need? Multi-site distance learning, again, that kinda fits in with the e-learning. Big conversation on reviewing library and guidance, the certification of staff members, and what do schools actually need for a media specialist, librarian, and guidance, and reviewing the media staffing regulations, and this would support the work that Eustis Farnham, the modification they brought forward. From NDE, definitely, 'cause in five years, there's been a lot of definition changes and updates and so forth, and so, NDE has been, staff have been working very hard to update the terminology in the current Rule 10, especially in curriculum assessment, and Jolene Palmer with School Environment and Safety has some recommendations also with the work that she's doing. So, we, we've been just collecting all of this information, and then we will be taking time to look at it and, and deciding whether or not we will bring that forward, if it will become a part of Rule 10 or not. So, there were responses from the State Accreditation Committee. We've had two. We had one in January, and we had one on May 15th, and these were just some of their responses. They would like us to make sure that there's a flexibility in meeting accreditation, especially some of the smaller schools, but it also can have an effect on some of the larger schools, too. So, they just wanna make, make sure that we have flexibility, that there are some options. There was this menu of options discussion that came up, that there would be more than one way maybe to gain accreditation. Not sure what exactly that would look, look like, but there was that conversation. Revised content of Rule 10 for flexibility, again. So, making sure, this came out very strong, is keeping continuous improvement in Rule 10, making sure that it maybe even becomes a bigger part of accreditation than it is currently. You know, right now, the, the visits are once every five years, and they have to submit an action plan every five years along with a report. That there, I think there is a way that we could include that in and make, give it a little more strength, stamina, as far as what's expected of schools for continuous improvement. That is my area, that is my love, and I can tell you that I really honestly believe that if schools could improve how they are doing continuous improvement, you will see improvement in student performance and so forth. But I'm not gonna go, I'm not gonna go there right now. So, and then, probably the strongest thing, information that we had, remember, the board had talked about a multi-level system, there was minimal to no support from the State Accreditation Committee on doing that. They really were wanting not just be another label, you know, they don't, they, they were afraid that it will just be another label on a school like they have for accountability, they would have an accreditation label, and they just did not see any benefit in that. And so, they, that was probably the thing that we got the biggest pushback on from the state committee was the multi-level.
And my, my favorite comment on the slide is the one, "I like the Commissioner's idea." You know, you gotta point that one out. What I will say, I just want you to know, I mean, we take that committee and we've got, had, I will say, conversations kinda with a limited perspective relative to this, so really what I would encourage is we keep having conversations, I think, as we find some understanding about what we really mean about combining those things, what, what we really hope to be able to do, 'cause there's some desire for us to create some efficiencies around how these processes work and not have a lot of separate things, and that, I think that was some of the pushback I heard, Don, and, and then I, I think the other part is, well, we'll continue those dialogues, but we definitely wanted to present you with kind of people's first blush responses, 'cause you might, you might hear from, from folks that have that similar first blush response.
Right. So, taking all of that information, we kinda developed a couple of themes that we saw developing from this work that we have been doing, and I would say that really we are in that input stakeholder feedback phase right now, where we have done a little work on playing with some multi-tier models, but right now, we're really just kinda collecting and wanting to hear what everybody has to say before we take this summer to really start doing our serious work. So, theme number one, minimal to no support for linking or connecting accountability with accreditation, and pushback on the development of multiple labels or designations of accreditation. It's just seen as additional labels for schools. So, those are the two primary themes that have come out of the, of the information that we have been collecting to date. So, based on that, we, now it's time for you guys to do some work. We have some policy questions that we actually would like to get your feedback on as we go through this, the rest of this presentation, and they're gonna be tied to information that we've, that's been introduced to you before, like linking AQuest Accountability System with Accreditation. This comes from your, your planning committee, your, back in September. So, currently, accreditation and accountability are two distinct processes, Rule 10, Section 10. Rule 10, Section 10, accountability reporting for school systems and school districts outlines the AQuest accountability system. And AQuest tenants are referenced in Rule 10, but are not a requirement. They currently, the tenants are listed and it even states at the beginning of Rule 10 that, that they are there for information only, along with the quality indicators are also in Rule 10, but they have no guidance that goes with them. So our question to you as a board is, what are the State Board of Education purpose and rationale in linking the AQuest accountability system to accreditation?
A couple of things I'd like to say. First of all, the committee, why we're doing this full board is committee has not had time to really discuss it. And the committee will also be discussing this this summer and coming back in August. So, in this discussion, part of what you share will really help inform the committee. So I'm the first to say, as Chair of that committee, we just have not had time and so that's why we're here at this point. And I think part of it is important to hear your voice on some of these questions that come forward, such as the term linking. If you notice the school, and really the only input so far, I mean, we had requested stakeholder engagement and right now, the only stakeholder engagement for the most part has been school people. And we need to think about that from a broader perspective. And we need to still look at other states and some other things. But if you think of the term linking, I'd like to tell you, I think, one of the challenges, it's about communication. I think at a board level, when we think about linking the way it currently is in Rule 10, it's a linking process that helps to really see the synergy between accreditation and accountability. I, from what's been shared, I think students think linking means if your needs improvement, then you're now accreditation status is needs improvement. And so I think that part of what we need to do is build a better directory of terminology and what's meant. Because I think that what the board was thinking about in, from some of our discussions, is not to say that linking would be specifically on classification and accreditation, but the broader accountability, which is AQuest, which is many of the elements in Rule 10. So I think those are some dynamics that we need to work through and have more clarity on and discussion on.
That, that helps.
I guess it's me, I guess, Lisa, go ahead.
I'll let you first.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying you can ask your question.
Okay. I was wondering, someone in my district, when they heard the idea of different classes of accreditation, through the roof. But when you talk to him about the way it used to be, you had your minimum standards and something about when you went above and beyond, you got, you earned an A rating or a AAA or whatever, can you just very briefly explain?
There was a time, I, I don't remember, but Dr. Hayner, Pat Hayner was, is on the committee and she remembers the days of A and AA accreditation, but you, you had to meet like the A accreditation and then you could apply for AA accreditation. That, and that was about, that's about all I do know about that. But there, you could go, there would be kind of like a higher standard of accreditation that you could apply for to be a AA school. I do not know why that process went away, but.
And just because I'm new, I don't understand the process, but who's the accreditation committee and, I mean, what are, what are they made up of? Are they appointed? I, I don't understand who that is.
We have 25 stakeholders from across the state of Nebraska, so we have representation from all states of Nebraska, all parts of Nebraska, and also all size of school districts, public, non-public. And we also have community people. We have, we've added some additional community people to make sure that we are representing all individuals in the state of Nebraska. OPS always has someone on, LPS always has, because they're our largest, largest school districts. But then we have superintendents, we have teachers, we have counselors, we have.
So you invited people?
Yes.
Or were they appointed by someone? No.
They are, they are invited, they're asked to make an application. There's, there's an application process and they are rotated off and on, they're, they're on for three years and then they can up for another three years and then, but then they can.
And, and is there non-public schools represented and all the different?
Yes.
And the other question I had, is there a way that I can help gather more information from leaders in my district? I mean, is there something I can forward to them to help get the feedback that you, so you have a larger pool of, I don't know.
Well, every one of your school districts would have received it, but I could certainly send it to you.
Would you?
Sure.
Okay, thanks, okay.
And it has, we have over, we're probably hitting 50 pages of information that has been sent into us now.
And you sent to the superintendent level?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Public and non-public and service units.
I think, I'd like to speak from a committee level. I, I think that's part of what we have to look at this summer, because we, I think, have had different concepts of some of the stakeholder engagement and the processes. So I think this may be a time, rather than really getting more information, to look at where we are, regroup and then get the next wave of information from that process. So I think that's kind of where we are at a committee level this summer.
Our, our plan, and I didn't really point this out in our, is, you know, we will be doing a presentation at Administrator Days, but then we also plan on kind of doing a road trip across the state this fall to have some, almost like hearings, but opportunities for conversations with individuals also. So not just, just submitting, but actually going out across the state, trying to get feedback there too.
So, one, one thing, Don, maybe I would just have you kind of go through the other two policy questions more, just to put them on the table so you know the types of things that we're looking for. And kind of what I'd recommend, I think, is as the committee kind of does that work, I want the rest of the board to know the questions that we pose. There'll be more that I think we can pose to, to the full board and find some ways to get some additional feedback. But as, as we dive into this, I think these three policy questions are kind of based on some of the feedback that we've heard so far. And if you just kind of share those other two, and then, then everybody can think about it a little bit, we'll probably prompt you for some other discussions as we do the committee work as well.
Right. Well, the second one is, is around the multi-level system and I don't need to do that. But currently, all schools are district accredited annually. That's what we just did today, the, for the Rule 10. The option is recommended a school to be moved to accredited on probation or non-accredited is outlined in Section 14 of Rule 10. I believe the last time that a school was placed on, accredited on probation was in 2009. So it's been a while since we've actually had a school accredited on probation. So our question is, what is your purpose and rationale to create a multi-level accreditation system? Do you want me to do the third one yet or?
Well, are we going to respond to this question or do you want to do the other question?
I think I, you want me to get the third one out?
Yeah, maybe put the third one up and we come back to if you have some feedback.
The third one is the, of crediting each school and each school district. Currently, all public school districts that provide elementary and secondary instruction are required to be accredited. Approved private or proclamal schools are eligible to apply for and maintain accreditation. But it's, it is districts that are accredited, not buildings. And so, again, purpose and rationale to recommend accrediting schools and districts versus school districts only. So that's our third one.
Rachel.
I'd like to speak to the multi-tiered piece, because again, I think there's some communication. I think the intent and discussion, at least from a board level in the retreat, and we've not really had the committee focus on this since, the multi-tiered was not necessarily there would be different levels. It, it was that, one, there might be different lengths of time, and I think that's gotten grouped under multi-tier. So that some schools we may feel should have a shorter time based on all the different criteria that, than other schools. I think we also talked around that multi-level system be around the process that maybe we need more levels than just on probation. That the multi-levels might be like warning systems. So if schools have a greater number of areas of concern, that, that either that be a short cycle, three years, maybe that be something where, you know, they're credited on notice with these things needing to be, I don't know what the language would be.
Sure.
What we talked about was looking at models in other states that do some of these kinds of things and have that discussion at a board level so that we can give policy direction on defining some of these key pieces. So again, I think from my observation of the discussions that we had at that retreat and have not had any in-depth discussion since, is that that definition had a different connotation than maybe the schools have been or the committee have talked about. So I think there were several different elements under that concept of multi-level.
When we had, when we had the discussion earlier in the retreat and we talked about accredited, it was also brought up that, that some states have no accreditation.
Right.
How then, how do they account for the quality of their schools?
I think that's left to the local district to do that.
Oh, okay.
So the local school board and administration would be.
So you go out and toot your own horn?
You do.
I see.
They, they, they probably can go for regional accreditation. There are other agencies that accredit throughout the state, such as the BAST and would, could be something.
Okay, or perhaps a university or?
University could be other.
Okay, okay.
Nothing universal.
Has our university system expressed any interest in wanting to be involved in accreditation as far as we're concerned?
We have higher, two higher ed individuals on the State Accreditation Committee.
Okay.
UNL and UNK.
So I, clarifying point, I mean, a little bit different in Nebraska, we have the responsibility to accredit. It's a little bit different than just general accreditation and so, so it probably has slightly different meaning from state to state as well. So it's probably one of those aspects we could talk about a little bit more. I saw a couple of hands go up, maybe Maureen, yeah?
When I think about this, I look at the, the birth of AQuest, which started before I came on the board, and our strategic plan that we've brought on board. I just think there's a whole new realm of things that we can look at to apply to updating Rule 10. And so, when I, when I look at accreditation, I want all of our schools accredited. But sometimes I sit back when I see that list and I go, oh, all 244 were accredited. Well, this is great, but where in the spectrum are they really, especially when we have needs improvement schools?
Right.
So, that's just my thinking, whether it's good, bad or indifferent.
And one more on that kind of thread, because we've had the priority schools in front of us the past two meetings, you know, that was another catalyst. And that's a lesson learned from other states, that if, if you don't intersect, if there isn't progress being made, we're very fortunate, so I'm not assuming that progress won't be made, but we do need to think about the law and think about the expectation that if progress is not made, what do we do? And other states that have had similar kinds of things have realized not having something in accreditation that helped guide what to do, then there's a limitation. And we need to define that with consistency so that we know what our direction would be. If in the case a priority school was not making the adequate progress that we'd want to see, what do we do? And how do we define that? And I think again, that's an element that comes into play.
So I might just, oh, so Robin, go ahead.
Am I hearing us right, that there's going to be time discussion? I'm assuming it starts in the committee. You'll be seeking our input, very similar to what you're seeing here.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, I just got all kinds of things that are rattling around up there.
And we're out of time now.
Yeah. But when we start talking about multi-level accreditation somehow being linked to accountability, woo, and, you know, then I start thinking of, we got schools like Minutair and we got schools like OPS. And how, man, I, I have, I just have questions, I have no answers.
You need answers.
Yes, I do.
You're going to be looking to you.
But anyway, we, there will be a lot of time between now and the October for us to visit and then get input and stuff, okay?
It's mind-boggling.
Yeah, and the word flexibility is one word that I guess I kind of latch on to, but.
So, yeah, Rachel.
I know. The other word you didn't hear that's another important element word, and that's innovation. That, that we, we want Rule 10 not just have flexibility, but we've talked about, I think at the retreat, that word came up also as an element that, that fosters innovation. Right now, sometimes Rule 10 limits innovation for a school. And we need to ensure that Rule 10 fosters innovation in a school. And how do you do that? How does it look in our accreditation rule?
Patsy.
Well, I think that word answers your question, or at least starts, you want an answer to your question about Omaha and Minutair. Because having worked in a smaller school, lived in a community with a smaller school, innovation is the only way those schools will find a way to survive unless we are flexible and unless we accept innovation as part of our evaluation and accreditation of them.
Pat.
Going on with the word flexible, flexible can have, kind of take you down different roads. But I would hope that when we talk about that, that, and we're talking about all that we've talked about today, that the word equity is playing a very big role.
So I, in a sense, and at least we're close to a point to where we conclude, but what I'd throw into the mix, right, a lot of work. And actually, in part, I think the exercise for us is for you to know, there's a lot more discussion that has to happen. And staff, I mean, in part, I think the questions that we're getting from, from folks so far that we've heard from, right, create, create this environment, okay, how do we really provide some clarity? What's our real intent with certain, certain changes? Rule 10 actually does a lot right now. And I think folks probably don't understand that. Right now, we have AQuest embedded within Rule 10, but it's not embedded the way that we want. There's powers, accreditation is actually our strongest power as it comes to accountability in my perspective. And the fact of the matter is those things haven't necessarily come together in, in the way that we originally envisioned. And there's a lot of things that are still probably in those works, but this is where we get to put them in and codify them and hopefully make them make sense for, for the long haul. And so that's why this is such an important element of that work. I know we'll come back to have the committee do that. We have a lot of staff work that's taking place on that front. And I, I think it's a good exercise of, yeah, there's a lot, a lot of work to do. So I think we're right to have some meetings this summer, so. Yeah, Lisa.
Just from the word innovation to, I don't know, the, this is, we need to be very informed about what the state, having small schools, large schools, we need to be informed. And so I just want to be very thoughtful in getting more engagement so we're making informed decisions about where we're going to go with Rule 10. It's a lot of responsibility and afterthoughts aren't going to count. We need your thoughts now, from everybody. I don't want this to be something and we think we're doing it right and then all of a sudden people, no, that's not, we can't, no, we need your help now. So please help us get the. So please help us get the input that we need to make informed decisions.
I think we'll end with that. I thank Dawn for his efforts on this and thank all of you for a little bit of that dialogue, so. The other, the next thing on my report is actually Ryan, and I'm going to let him do a kind of a special introduction here, I think, so.
Well, you might have noticed that you are now joined by...
Yes, young people.
A group of young women who represent Girl State, which is happening this week in Lincoln. And so these Girl State representatives have indicated an interest in education as part of their experience. And one thing I'll note about Girl State is that Girl State seems to be a great opportunity for meaningful civic engagement. And civic engagement, of course, is an interest of yours and your strategic plan and in other efforts. And so we want to introduce these Girl State representatives. And I'm going to tell you that they're giving you a run for, for your money and for our money, or your position, I should say, because eight of them are representing as state board members. And another group of them then have been selected as, as high-ranking officials at the Nebraska Department of Education, including a commissioner. And so I would ask each of you to stand when your name and, and position is read, please. And then when we're finished with those introductions, I think we'll take a break and you can interact with, with some of these Girl State representatives. Okay?
Yeah, what, please?
Yeah, so here's how we're going to run that. I'm going to read your name and you're very loudly going to say what town and maybe school you're from. And so like if you're from Omaha, say what school you go to. If you're from Eustis, you can say Eustis-Farnham and that would work too, right? Okay. So the eight members of the State Board of Education. Ella Kissinger.
I'm from Donovan and I go to Donovan Trumbull.
Amira Moxie.
I'm from Mooseville and I go to Mooseville.
Riley Peets.
Hi, I'm from North Loop, but I go to school in Ord.
Casey Teal.
Hi, I'm from Bassett and I go to Rock County High School.
Caitlin Bussinger.
Hi, I go to, I'm from Ainsworth and I go to Ainsworth Public.
Samantha Clifford.
I'm from Diller and I go to Diller-Oldell.
Gwen Gaunt.
I'm from Ravenna and I go to Hartland-Bushburn and Grand Island.
And Sadie Shriver.
Hi, I'm Sadie Shriver and I'm from Auburn and I go to Auburn High School.
So these are the eight state board members representing Girl State. Thank you. And the ten appointed positions. Anne Stefan as the Commissioner of Education.
Hi, I'm Anne Stefan. I'm from Hartington and I go to school at St. Her Catholic.
Elizabeth Lipp as the Deputy Commissioner of Education.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Lipp. I'm from Laurel. I go to Laurel Comfort Courage.
Grace Knoppik as an Administrator for Adult Program Services.
Hi, I'm Gracie. I live in Belgrade and I go to Fullerton High School.
Olivia Vore as the Administrator for the Office of Early Childhood.
Hi, I go to Burwell and I live in Aurora.
Anna Sluka as the Administrator for Finance and Organizational Services.
Hi, I'm from Milligan and I go to Exeter Milligan.
Katie Thompson as the Administrator for School Improvement and Accreditation.
Hello, my name is Katie Thompson and I'm from David City and I go to St. Thompson Quinnes Catholic High School.
Anna Wakehouse is the Administrator for Diverse Population Programs.
I'm from Tacoma. I go to Tacoma-Hurman.
Beth Bragg is the Administrator for Federal Programs.
Hi, I'm Beth Bragg and I'm from Gordon-Rashville and I go to Gordon-Rashville Public School.
Natalie Johnson as the Assistant Commissioner for Vocational Rehabilitation Services.
Hi, I'm Natalie Johnson. I'm from Bertrand and I go to Bertrand Public School.
And Nia Kelner as the Administrator for Curriculum Instruction and Innovation.
Hi, I'm from Atkinson, Nebraska and I go to West Hall.
Were there any participants who I didn't announce? Okay, so let's show some appreciation for those appointments. And so this afternoon, after the break and after you have some time to visit with these young women, Katie Graham is going to meet with them in a question and answer and share some more information about the Department of Education and the work of this agency and the State Board of Education.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Dr. Ford. Appreciate it. At this time, the board will take a five-minute break. Which will mean ten minutes. The State Board is back now in session. We'll go back to our standing committee reports. Patricia Timm, please report on Policy Committee, please.
The Policy Committee has one consent agenda item. It's to reaffirm State Board Bylaw B-13 rule development. The Policy Committee members discussed the bylaw and reviewed the chart, which you can see in Spark under the Commissioner's Report on Rules, indicating review dates of the NDE rules. The Policy Committee intends to bring this bylaw back for re, for review by the end of the year to add language to clarify the procedures around the internal review of rules and communications about these reviews with the important board committees. At this time, the Policy Committee recommends that the State Board reaffirm this bylaw at the business meeting tomorrow. We had three discussion items. The first was the proposed revisions to State Board Policy, P-3, delegation to the Commissioner. The Policy Committee discussed this policy, proposed language to clarify when an action is committed by law or regulation to the board and when it is committed to the department as a whole and may be delegated to the Commissioner's decision. This will come back for action in August. The second one is proposed revisions to State Board Bylaw B-16, Board Member Expenses. This particular bylaw has been monitored because of potential legislative action which did not end up being passed. The Policy Committee discussed the bylaw and proposed revisions and will bring back to the full board for action at a later date, likely with the existing proposed revisions and possibly some additions. The third is legislative and regulatory priorities. At the Legislative Committee Chair Maureen's request, the Policy Committee members discussed the legislative and regulatory priorities that were adopted by the State Board in October of 2018 and the committee's input for the same. The committee's discussion was around the accountability of the regulatory priorities. The committee, the Policy Committee would recommend that procedures be put into place to monitor the progress of NDE meeting the adopted regulatory priorities. And the Policy Committee will start a scheduled review on State Board Position Statement S-6 Policy for Developing Global Competency at their August meeting.
Thank you, Patricia Timm. Thank you very much, ma'am. We'll continue on. Vice President Nichols, please report on the Legislative Committee meeting.
In Spark, you'll find some documents that I'll be referencing. In Spark, you will find some documents, a couple of documents that I'll be referencing in my report. But the first thing we want to do is have Ryan Halsted come up and share with you the things that ended with the legislative session that just ended a few days ago.
They managed to get their work done and they adjourned last Friday on the 84th Legislative Day, so they will not be back until the first Wednesday after the first Monday in January of 2020, which I think is January 8th, but don't hold me to that. So what is in Spark is a summary document, three pages long. What I did was I took all of the bills that you officially had a position on and I organized them. Page one is all of the bills that were enacted in some form during this 84-day session of the Legislature. So what I tried to do is quickly just note some action that NDE may need to address on that. On some of the bills, as you can see, there's some rule revisions that are going to have to occur because of a few of those rules. Some aren't directly Department's responsibility, but we're certainly going to be monitoring them. The Senator Quick's bill about a local economic development fund can be utilized by cities for early childhood infrastructure and development is one we don't have any oversight of, but that was an important one that we wanted to support. You'll notice a couple bills are listed there. Senator Bowles's bill about increasing rates for behavioral health providers, that bill did not get out of the Appropriations Committee. However, the mainline budget bill did include 4% increases to providers in that area, so I felt you should note and we should show you. It was successful to show support for behavioral mental health, not only just schools, but the providers and building on that, so that's noted there also. Deputy Commissioner Schultz might really appreciate the fact that LB-642, the Brain Injury Trust Fund, that's been a concept that's been around for quite some time. Senator McDonald's bill, you supported that, 642, it did get advanced general file. The Legislature, though, took Senator Bowles' bill that Speaker Shear had prioritized for an entirely different reason and moved all of 642 into that bill, and it got enacted. So that's an accomplishment of something that I know the Department and staff and vocational rehabilitation have been trying to support. We've been trying to figure out a way to help address the injury, the topic of brain injuries and helping address people become productive citizens again, so that one's shown there also. Obviously, the one that we were actively engaged on early on in the session, even though the Board opposed, LB-399, it was largely about mandating the civics exam as the only measurement of knowledge in social studies standards. That did get enacted with some modifications. It does require that the State Board of Education shall adopt and promulgate rules and regulations. So that's going to be a requirement. Staff has already started to work on some basic, but there's probably going to be some policy questions asked of you on some of that, including one of your topics for Legislative to measure civic readiness in a comprehensive way. So that's part of the ongoing discussion, and that one I'm sure you're going to have future discussions on. Page two of the document just shows all the other bills and where they're currently at at the moment. They're still pending. They can be brought up next session. We'll see when the session starts on whether any of those move or we see new bills similar to those with different concepts. The last page of the document has the interim studies that were introduced that were assigned to the Education Committee, so you can see a couple there that may be of interest to you. We certainly will watch that, we'll wait to see. Given the fact that the Legislature just adjourned, there may not be a whole lot of work that starts on any interim study right now, but we'll certainly be watching and willing to provide any information on that. So I'll stop there as to the status of Legislature and legislation this past session, see if there's any questions.
Colleagues, any questions you'd like to ask of Brian? Yep.
When does, is it 676? Which is the civics one?
399.
Oh, when does 399, when does that go into effect? Or tell me how that process works, please.
Well, the Constitution provides that all bills enacted take effect three calendar months after adjournment of the Legislature unless an emergency clause is attached, which takes a higher vote of Senators. It takes 31 votes, I believe, for the emergency clause to be attached. So in this case, LB-399, since they adjourned on May 31st, three calendar months puts it at September 1st of this year for all bills will take effect unless the bill had the emergency clause or unless they postponed its implementation to some date further out in the future than September 1st.
So I mean, that's a short timeframe for us to provide some kind of guidance to schools. Is, I mean, what do you see as the timetable that we have something go through the Board? But, yeah, I mean, I, just because I'm new, I don't know.
Well, I do not believe you will have promulgated the rule and reg by September 1st. That's pretty much a given because even that regarding. The law will take effect. How we're going to help define and set parameters and all of that will take some time. I'm sure you're going to want input on some of the concepts, but I would think by the start of the 21, the 2021 school year, there would be the rules and regs in place. So some of this also, the way that bill is worded, it's the Committee on Americanism, that's now called the Committee on American Civics. It's annually appointed by a Board on a calendar year basis. So I'm not quite sure whether it changes on September 1st with the old committee or whatever. So those are a few of the mechanics, but some of the statutory requirements are things you can all start doing and working on. Many of our school districts already do everything that's in that statute or even the modified requirements. Some of the provisions of that statute apply to the non-public schools also as to what they're supposed to be doing for instruction. So there's already schools working on any adoptions to curriculum and that, but I think that'll be a process that isn't just going to happen like that, so.
I would highlight that through the social studies standards, too, we're also checking, cross-checking on that front, so things that would be appropriate for the standards we're looking at. So there are probably several ways and it'll, we'll have some time probably to keep responding to questions that come in. Rule 10 actually is implicated to a certain extent as well, so that's another dynamic of the conversation.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate all your work on this. He's the guru. Our other discussion item zeroes in on bringing to you our first draft, our initial draft of our Legislative and Regulatory Priorities for 2019, 2020, and it's there in Spark for you to look over. We've had some input. Pat, thank you for your committee. I'll be checking with you to get the exact language of everything. But we are, we're hoping to get more input from each of you and we'll discuss this at, in our August meeting. We'll come back with anything that you might bring forward to us in the meantime. But also, we had a big discussion around early childhood and early childhood education with our legislation and with our regulatory priorities. And so one of the things that we've chosen to do is to reach out to between, like you, like each of you, to reach out to you for any comments or concerns on early childhood as you look over the document, but to also reach out to stakeholders across the state to ask about early childhood education, because we have several stakeholders out there that are in opposition to some of the things regarding early childhood. And we know that, as educators, how important reaching out to our communities and our schools is. And Patsy had brought forth some information for us that I really, she and I just talked about this yesterday, and what I really appreciated what she found out in talking to some folks was it all dealt with equity, equity to access, and that our most vulnerable, which we don't often are able to reach, have the highest return of investment if we invest in early childhood. So that's why we want to reach out to stakeholders, especially those in opposition, to really get a deeper dive into what they're opposed to and why and what we can do before we come up with another draft. And Brian's going to be reaching out to some of those groups for us and getting information. And the Committee will be doing a Zoom conference call in mid-July sometime, because we're going to be doing a presentation on NDE Day at Administrator Days on July 31st, sharing our priorities with them and seeking any input from them as well. And that will all take place before our next Board meeting. And so we'll come back to our next Board meeting with another draft, an updated draft for you to look at. And from that part, I think, Committee, have I missed anything? No, I think I have. We'll be doing some further calendaring of meeting with some outside entities, but we'll be discussing that in our July phone conference call. And so if you have any concerns or anything, please bring those to us. Just email me and Ryan, you know, don't hesitate. Pat?
Just a comment because of the Childhood Commission met yesterday. In September, there will be a first draft of the goals of the Committee. There's one on qualifications, there's one on funding, and there's one on community engagement. And we spent a good part of the time yesterday talking about objectives and strategies underneath those three goals. There will be a first draft for the report coming out in September, and then the final report will be, will come out in December. And so I will keep you abreast of the things that we're talking about so that you know what's going on.
I appreciate hearing the word "funding" being brought because that was a lot of our discussion as well with early childhood.
Well, and there are some kind of amazing statistics out there despite the fact that we know that there needs to be more funding. Nebraska is doing some right things, but it's just not enough yet. And so, but we'll, I gave Ryan some information today and then we'll kind of keep an eye on one of my colleagues who's on the Committee is here today, too. And so we'll, because we want to make sure that we're all going down the same path and not contradicting each other as to what we're trying to put together.
I appreciate that information. Rachel?
You might want to consider doing some sort of, whether you do some definitions or glossary of some sort. The reason I say that is the changes that you've made to the educator preparation and certification, sometimes when we use the term educators, we only think of teachers. And I think that's important, and after the discussion today, you may want to expand that into thinking about alternatives and how do we address library, media, guidance counselors came up. So in that area, and there might be a few other areas, that adding a little bit of some definitions might help really clarify.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that information. Anyone else? Seeing none, that concludes my report. President Whittle?
Thank you, Vice President Nichols. Thank you very much, ma'am. We'll move on to Patricia Timm. Please report on the Commissioner's Appraisal Committee meeting.
Pursuant to a discussion at last month's meeting, the Appraisal Committee recommends that the Commissioner's Contract of Employment be renewed with the following as the major revised terms. The contract termination date would be extended to June 30th, 2022, and the gross, the income increase in gross pay by 2.3% effective July 1st, 2019, to $232,620.89, and an increase by another 2.3% on July 1st, 2020, to $237,971.17. The Board will be asking for formal approval on the employment contract with the Commissioner tomorrow.
Thank you, Patricia. Thank you very much, ma'am. Any questions? We'll move on to 3.4. Lisa Fricki, please report on the AQuest Teaching and Learning Domain Committee meeting.
For discussion item, thank you. For the discussion item 3.4(c), the Committee discussed the second draft of the Nebraska Social Studies Standards, and Dr. Corey Epler is going to come up and give a quick overview of what was discussed in our committee meeting this morning.
Great, thank you. Corey Epler, Academic Officer, Administrator for the Office of Teaching, Learning, and Assessment. And by quick, it's just going to be a quick 40 minutes, we'll be fine.
Yeah, right. I think not.
I did, I did, I did. I do appreciate Ryan pointing out the Girl State as a great example of civic engagement, and it's very timely as we think about the revision to Nebraska's Social Studies Standards. So what I'll point out is what's available in Spark is Draft 2 of the Nebraska Social Studies Standards. Along with Draft 2 is a summary document that looks like this, which includes reminders about the definitions of standards and structural materials and curriculum and how those are used in, along with standards and indicators that the Board approves. The second page of the document just provides a little bit of information around the process of how we got from Draft 1 to Draft 2. There's information in there around our public input survey, which I might point out that currently we've had 476 responses to our public input survey, and I appreciate Dr. Wise pointing out this morning that 55% of those are educators, but 45% of that are noneducators. And I would say that's somewhat significant and a difference of what we've seen from other public input surveys. As Draft 2 is available, so is the public input survey, so folks are able to provide input throughout the summer months. We'll keep that open, we'll continue to do targeted outreach and solicit feedback from specific stakeholder groups throughout the summer. I will also reference, and Commissioner, thank you for pointing out, our intentionality around embedding 79724, the requirements of LB-399 into the social studies standards. That has been very intentional, along with the requirements of multicultural education and the statutory responsibilities that are outlined in there. We will bring back Draft 3 later this fall, and we'll continue to revise and really fine-tune the information that's in the standards, thinking about quality. We hear often that the standards need to meet a certain level of quality, and we will continue to do our due diligence around that, thinking about coherence between grade levels as well as clarity to provide information and support for educators. The last thing that I might mention is in August, we will have a review of the standards for bias. We're engaging in a partnership with the Midwest and Plains Equity Assistance Center, and they will actually be here on site two days. We hear often that the standards need to meet a certain level of quality. And we will continue to do our due diligence around that, thinking about coherence between grade levels as well as clarity to provide information and support for educators. The last thing that I might mention is in August, we will have a review of the standards for bias. We're engaging in a partnership with the Midwest and Plains Equity Assistance Center. And they will actually be here onsite two days where we will work the standards through their bias review tool to ensure that as the standards serve as a foundation for instruction in Nebraska, that there are not implicit or explicit bias within the standards. So we're really excited about that. And I will say, we have never done that with a set of standards before, so that will be very exciting. And timeline, you see at the bottom of the sheet. I, I think publicly, I can say that we are anticipating this board to take a vote on the standards in November, which means we will have a final draft to you in October. And like I shared with the committee this morning, that's like three months before we've got to have it all said and done. So we're going to be working hard this summer.
Well, you have been working hard, and thank you for being here. Any board members have any questions for Dr. Epler? Seeing no questions, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
For action items 3.4A and 3.4B regarding the proposed revisions of Rule 20 and Rule 23, the Commissioner's going to provide a little overview of our discussion this morning.
Yeah, and so, thank you to the committee. I presented a little bit of potential background. Obviously on Rule, in particular on Rule 23, we've kind of gone down this path before. And we were intentional about thinking about how basic skills competency and how our approach to that is not maybe the ideal type of approach. We certainly looked at other states and other areas that could be done. And even had proposed some language this year in statute to change what that process may look like. Right now, the way that the law is constructed, we feel fairly constrained around the notion of that we shall go down a path where we have a test essentially make a decision about basic skills competency. However, we, we were diving into it and actually brought it, brought in folks together, looking at the possibility. And so Rule 23, the first time that we went down that path, there was a feeling certainly that we were lowering the expectations around basic skills competency. We took an approach in Rule 23 this time to, to think a little bit differently about what those composite scores might be and what the, what a floor would be within that. But there's still a sense or a feeling that that, that is lowering the expectations. We also had included though ACT as another alternate type of measure, kind of our first exploration of using a different type of measure around basic skills with the intention that students that take ACT, why would they have to take another test to demonstrate their competency? So that was the rationale with that part. Also, we had some rationale around how it intersects with Rule 20. So Rule 23 being really what had defined basic skills competency and, and set essentially cut scores relative to that. Rule 20 was largely, or is largely about the program approval of, of our educator preparation programs. And we had changed that up to, to really kind of put some requirements on programs around kind of remediating the, the approaches that if students had some type of deficit. Well, we got feedback on kind of both fronts, I would tell you. Both fronts that led me to talk to the committee again today about, maybe there's a better approach, right? I mean, in the last week even, I've had many conversations about, are we thinking about this wrong? And I actually, I've, I've had a couple little moments where I'm going, eh, maybe our approach is actually taking us down a path that is actually making the test even more important instead of what we really intended that, that we would, we had, you know, have a bit of a game plan that we wanted to try to expand what that looks like. So two other elements of feedback, I think, in the meantime. Number one, I think we're being too incremental. And I, you know, that's my fault, I'll, we'll put it all on me, being too incremental about how we're thinking about this bigger picture. Number one, we wanted to think of ways that was potentially discriminatory on, and, and perhaps introduce bias. But we also wanted to have an approach that really, I think our philosophy in Nebraska is that a test does not demonstrate everyone's abilities. And therefore, I feel like we've kind of painted ourselves a little bit into a corner. So my recommendation actually is that we go a bit back to the drawing board. Our conversation, I think, in committee was really good. Because there's a chance, I think, to look at basic skills very differently. Now, perhaps we need law changes, or perhaps our interpretations of current law would actually allow us to put basic skills competency into an approach that would actually rely on our teacher preparation institutions to demonstrate basic skills through the types of coursework that, that are requirements underneath their, their prep programs. I think that makes some more sense than perhaps where we've been. There might be other approaches that we can certainly explore as well. But I feel like, actually, I feel quite good about making this recommendation to you. Brad Dirksen, is he here? Brad probably doesn't feel good. He's gone to a lot of work. And probably others. I know we have some of our post-secondary partners here as well. We've gone to a lot of work on exploring this. But I also feel very comfortable that, that all of us have kind of taken the current version and said, well, this would be better than where we're at, but perhaps not ideal. And so I think there's an opportunity for us to explore this and, and lead towards the ideal and not lose sight of actually the original intention of looking at this in the first place. Sometimes we feel, and you see it on every rule, that we have a little bit constrained by what's been done in the past and the perspectives that might come to the table. And it's really my expectation, I think your expectation, that we look to be visionary as possible and, and set up that for the future. So I, I apologize that we've become incremental, and that's one of the things I look at. I'd rather stop at this moment in time and say, what's the bigger vision that we want to accomplish? How do we do that? What, there, I think there is, we've learned some things. I think there is an interaction between basic skills and, and program approval that we could actually look at in a much more meaningful way and be able to advance, our intention to advance the profession. Not to, not to be in a position where we're, we're lowering expectations. Not to be in a position that, that where we, we are somehow shaping it in the wrong direction. But actually be thoughtful about the philosophies that we have, and I think you have, about how tests should not make decisions but inform decisions and how tests should actually lead to improvement instead of, instead of simply make, make a, a hard stop point for, for students that, for anyone pursuing an education career. So I got my soapbox out and I stood on it for a while, but I'll, I'll, I'll ask if, back to Lisa, if there's any questions.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Board members, do you have any questions for the Commissioner? Seeing no further questions, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Lisa.
And that's the conclusion of my report.
I might add, I mean, just from a technical standpoint, I think tomorrow, at least, the recommendation of the committee was to go ahead and remove those items from the agenda. You could also vote on those items, but if, with your acceptance of that, we could remove them from the agenda and, and proceed with the path I suggested.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on, 3.5. Patsy Cog Johns, please report on the AQuest Student Success and Access Domain Committee meeting, please.
The committee reviewed two consent agenda items on tomorrow's agenda. 8.6J and 8.6K related to career and technical education grants. The committee recommends that these two items remain on the consent agenda. Any questions? 3.5A is an action item to grant conditional approval under Rule 18 for the Youth Care and Beyond Learning Center to operate in the 2019-2020 school year. Speaker Don Loski, Loski, did I always say it incorrectly? Did I say it right?
You did.
Oh, yay. Well, speak to us a little bit about this.
Well, this is really one of the fun parts of my job is being able to open up a school. And so we're bringing to you Youth Care and Beyond Learning Center out of Omaha. It's located at 6055 Country Club Road, kind of north of Emmanuel Hospital. But they've been functioning as residential places for kids and been working with the local school districts to provide their education. They decided that what they really needed to meet the needs of the students that are housed at their place would be their own school. So they approached us about opening a Rule 18 school. And so we had the opportunity to work with them pretty closely on the requirements of being a Rule 18 school. We made an onsite visit, and they have hired the appropriate personnel. And so we are ready to move forward the recommendations so that they may be able to start operating this school for the individuals. As you may know, Rule 18 schools are for individuals that are in a residential placement. And so they've met all the requirements for, to operate as a school.
Board members, are there any questions at this? Yes.
What's the age range of the kids?
They are doing middle school, high school, so about 10 at the youngest, 12 to 18. And there's six to, they said their census will be six to 12 students a day.
So it's very small.
It is small.
Do the... How long, what's an approximate, how long the kids are there?
That, I don't know what their, what their length of stay is.
Okay.
Are there any more questions? Okay, the committee recommends approval of this item. Thank you so much, Don.
Thank you, Pat.
3.5B, action item to adopt proposed revisions to Rule 11, regulations for the approval of pre-kindergarten programs established by school boards or educational service units for the issuance of early childhood education grants. Rule 11 is before the State Board for adoption of this proposed revisions. The committee received a summary of the proposed revisions, including the information from the hearing. The committee has asked Melody Hobson to provide us some more information and to provide the board some more information on the proposed revisions.
Good afternoon. For the record, I am Melody Hobson. I'm the Administrator for the Office of Early Childhood. And that Rule 11 has been kind of a long time in the revision process. Originally, it was, the revisions were to kind of harmonize what the, and to make parallel the pathways for home visiting and center-based staff. In the middle of that, LB 807 was passed, which added a whole new wrinkle, which added a waiver process that we have been working on for the past year for school districts who are having a lot of difficulty in finding or cannot find a teacher with, as a certified teacher for early childhood. What we've been seeing is we've been seeing a lot of growth in the very rural areas. And we're also seeing growth in, besides just, you know, four-year-old, three-year-old programs, also with infants and toddlers, which requires more, more teachers. So with that, the LB 807 allows the State Board to create something that will, that will help monitor this process. So the, the, the package as a whole just does changes, some, some wording to clarify some, some definitions. It does increase the number of contact hours for classroom staff from 12 to 15, so in-service hours per year. That matches with some of the national research on, on change for improvement. And we did add language in there so that we would be in compliance with the Missing and Exploited Children's Act around birth certificates. And then we did add the, the waiver process. And so with the waiver process, if you remember, I think we've taken a little bit of this to you sometime last fall. So some of the, the new members probably don't, aren't familiar. But we did spend last summer trying to do a lot of information gathering. And so we did send out a survey to all school districts, to administrators, to teachers, to all the listeners that we had to find out, what did people think would be an appropriate process? And we got a lot of different answers, everything from "don't touch anything" to "why do they need, why do they need anything beyond high school?" So we really looked at what it would take to, to move, to move the needle a little bit. We looked, this is consistent with your legislative priorities for this year. We are requiring within the waiver that it be something that, that school districts show us that they are having difficulty, how did they, how do they try to get a teacher? What, what was the teacher pool kind of, and that people who would be, that the school district that would be eligible for a waiver then would make sure that the candidate had a base amount of education already. And was working with an institution of higher education to plan out what it would take and that the waiver would be no more than four years. So we think that this is a good compromise. This opens up the field to place, there, there are people who have child development degrees who may have a lot of knowledge about young children, but they don't have that teaching certificate and therefore, in traditional ways, are not eligible. It also would be a way to help grow the field in rural areas that, that don't have access. And, you know, truthfully, 22-year-olds are not flocking from Lincoln to go to some of the rural areas in Nebraska. This helps the district with their stability. So those are kind, the highlights of the, the waiver process and kind of the highlights of what the revisions of the rule are.
Board members, do you have any more questions? Melody? Yes. Pat?
How many ESU programs do you think this is going to affect?
I can, well, well, right now I can think of one.
Okay.
Any more questions? The committee recommends approval of this item tomorrow. 3.5c, discussion item, revisions to the State Board Position Statement on the Non-Discrimination Equal Education Opportunity in Schools and the Development of an Equity Lens. The committee met last week to continue reviewing the draft position statement on non-discrimination and equal educational opportunity in schools. The position statement was referred to the Student Success and Access Committee from the Policy Committee. We have been reviewing the statement in concurrence with the development of an equity lens for the State Board of Education. And working with us internally, I would like to introduce Zainab Rida, who has, along the way, provided us some, some great information and has joined us in our efforts. So we welcome her to our committee. The committee has been considering and reviewing, reviewing input from constituents and is now asking for the NDE staff to review both the position statement and the equity lens with this new information. The committee intends to bring a draft of both the position statement and the equity lens to the August board meeting for the board to review, with anticipated action on both at the September meeting. Committee members, what would you like to add to the discussion on the position statement and the equity lens that we have been working on? Okay. Board members, do you have any questions? Well, I add just a wee little bit. We've been working on this for over a year and a half. And as Ryan For said so eloquently, we're on the home stretch. And we're feeling pretty proud of ourselves and our work and looking forward to seeing it come to fruition. And I want to thank my committee members for all of their hard work. I already thanked Zainab. And I especially want to thank Ryan For, who's met with me literally hours in his office advising me on this. And I want him to know I appreciate him. So seeing that there are no questions, this concludes the Student Success and Access Committee report.
Thank you, Patsy Cog Johns. I will report on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. We have one consent agenda, consent item on the agenda. Grant the Commissioner the authority to obligate Education Improvement Fund lottery resources to support the creation of a data visualization and use network of innovation. Our speaker will be Dean Fulkers. This morning, the committee was briefed on this consent agenda item by Dr. Fulkers. This item is based upon work the State Board approved three years ago under the Innovation Grant Fund, which is lottery funds, and is furthering the Digital Ecosystem Grant that ESU, CC, and others have been implementing. Based upon the successful evaluations of that grant, this items would scale up the digital ecosystem project by creating a statewide network that would allow schools to access data faster and more efficiently. This network brings districts, NDE, and a vendor together to create a network that can eventually be used by every district in the state. The committee is supportive of the consent agenda item, and I will now ask Dean to provide more information. Thank you, Dr. Fulkers.
Thank you. Actually, you did an amazing job.
Actually, you did an, an amazing job, I think, summarizing, um, all of the elements.
Bryce did the amazing job.
Okay. Essentially, what we're attempting to do is, is the, the innovation grants that have been going on for about three years, um, have reached a place where we now have an opportunity to essentially scale them and create an opportunity for the innovations to be available to all districts. And so it's not just about those districts, um, that received a grant. And so that's what the networks, um, are creating, is an opportunity for us to do that. Uh, it allows for districts that are interested in these particular topics. This is the, the first of several, um, that we envision, um, coming as a part of the network process. Um, but it allows districts and ESUs to participate, um, to apply, to compete, um, in a competitive way, to be a member of the, the network. And then, the evolution of the resources, the prototypes, the whatever the tools that are, um, that are scaled, then become available to all districts. And so it's, it's sort of our way of taking the innovation and now giving it an opportunity to be alive and available to all in, in the state.
Any questions? Lisa?
This innovation that will go to all districts is kind of exciting. Um, I'm thinking of rural areas where the broadband isn't very strong. Can you hook up with any T that has strong bandwidth out in the rural areas?
So it's a great, it's a great question. Our, our, um, our districts actually have pretty strong access. The sort of biggest gap is outside of the school. Um, so it's, you know, often referred to as the homework gap. And, and in fact, it's, that topic is being addressed by one of the Governor's Task Force on the rural broadband. So that is a piece of it. And then we also have been involved with some things that are happening with the FCC. Um, and this is also on the shortlist of a potential future innovation network that, um, may in fact, come back to the board.
So that's great. And then the, there's, um, legislation in the Senate or Congress where they were gonna put internet on buses. Um, will that tie into what you'll be doing in the districts where the kids can do more at home now that you'll be doing this in the individual innovation project in the districts?
So it's a, it's a great question. Um, there's, there's like, a couple of pieces that I wanna separate out. So this first innovation network is really about data visualization and use. And so the, the target is really to ensure that educators, teachers, principals, administrators have access in an efficient way to the type of data they need to help inform teaching and learning. So that's what this, this particular motion, this network is about. The work related to the broadband access, um, and ensuring, um, the homework gap is filled, um, has multiple facets, one of which may be a wireless approach using an education broadband spectrum that uses towers that covers our state, um, which is one of the projects or the decisions the FCC is going to be making a move about. Um, the other is some alternative strategies, like what you're describing. So having, um, uh, tools or resources, wireless capacity on buses, or checking out MiFi's or WiFi's, um, as resources for students that maybe don't have internet access at home. Those are different types of strategies, each with their own pros and cons, but that's sort of a part of a big.
Big picture.
Big, big picture.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
There's no other questions? We will move on to board reports, dates, and discussion items with that. Thank you for submitting your monthly report. Board member reports are linked in Spark, and I encourage you to review each member's report. Now with our quarterly discussion on meeting participation, we're gonna have each board, board member share briefly about one event or activity that they participated in within the last three months. And if we could start with, uh, Pat Tim.
Well, I think I've told you enough about my meeting in, uh, early childhood in, in DC, so I will pass.
Mr. Stevens?
Uh, something that, that I found really exciting was we, uh, we, um, I always say, is it Harris Payne or Payne Harris? So, eh, him and I went out and congratulated and presented, uh, Sandstrom, Michael Sandstrom from the Shadrin High School as our history teacher of the year, and he will go on for, uh, the national award. And if they're better than him, they're awfully good.
Deb Neary?
You come back to me.
Oh, okay. Lisa Fricki?
Um, one of the things, I would think it was May eighth, that I had a chance to attend a, an after-school program, uh, sponsored by Collective Youth. And what they are doing for those young people after school and the volunteers and the partnerships they have throughout the city for this to work for multiple locations is amazing. So I just, kudos to them, and I hope, I, I hear that, um, some of this is gonna be occurring closer to my district, so I'm hoping to be able to see more of it. 'Cause that was way north and east, but it was well worth the travel. I was amazed at what they're doing.
Dr. Wise?
Uh, Collective for Youth does amazing work, so yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They do amazing work. Uh, Commissioner, are you gonna talk about the school visits? Because if so, then I'll talk about something else.
Oh, I can.
Okay. So that way, you know, 'cause he said only one.
Then I can cover all three of them.
Yeah, he said only one thing. And so then I'll talk about, I had an opportunity to go to Wayne State College and spend some time, uh, May eighth, and spend some time with, um, uh, the president and the team of the college and really having a great discussion about, um, their perception of some of the needs that they see as it impacts our policy and regulatory authority. And then also had a chance to tier their new, uh, career technical, um, industrial technic, technology building and some of the work that they're doing in that arena. And I think Wayne State really may be able to serve us well in the future as it relates to, uh, career education and, and teachers in career education. So it was a great opportunity to spend some time there.
Thank you, ma'am. Patsy?
Uh, I'm glad you're gonna cover our journeys, because I was gonna tell you that it was a great day, but you got trumped by a student. Um, on May thirty-first and, uh, June first, I, uh, traveled to Red Cloud, Nebraska, uh, with a student and sat on a panel, um, with three students. One who, eh, actually is no longer a student, but is out in the work world, working for a nonprofit. One who is in school, and one who is headed to Roosevelt College. And then three, there were three teachers, one from a small school, one from a medium-sized school. And then I, I kind of represented, even though retired, a, a very large school, even though I taught in a smaller school too. But the purpose was to, um, um, work with, uh, Willa Cather Conference Foundation to talk about, um, arts and education. And the, the students presented, um, the challenges of being in, um, arts and arts education, 'cause some, a couple of them were looking to do that, and of course, one was working in a nonprofit. But they were also, uh, presenting to this group of people, um, the advantages of having been, um, in the arts in their school systems and what it had done for them in their, their daily lives. And they, um, were convincing this audience that they definitely were not soft skills that they, that they were using because they were involved in the arts. The teachers presented all kinds of struggles about, you know, scheduling and being honored and all of that. But the one commonality that they had that was so strong is that they wouldn't change their lives or anything, that they knew they had made a difference. Uh, I was so proud of the student that I brought along, and, um, I learned so much from listening to young people throughout my life. And it was two more days of doing that, and it was wonderful.
Maureen?
I'm not sure of the date, but it was in April. Robin and the Commissioner and myself, um, we attended the Skills USA State Conference. And again, I would urge each of you who have never attended it, uh, to attend. It's rather overwhelming to see the wonderful things that are going on in our schools that are related to, um, career and technical education. But you see students working with drones. You see students coding. You see students working, building, uh, sheds, building cabinets, uh, electrical work, um, welding. It's, what pleased me even more was to continue to look around the different rooms, the buildings we were in when we were taken on a tour, um, to see the girls, the females, that are involved in areas that we don't often think of females being in. Electrical work, installing all the lines in a home. Girls, uh, building cabinets. And the thing that really struck me was how important for so many of those areas was for students who don't really like math or like science, you have to know those things, uh, when you're working. Uh, as I found out, um, like for the, the ones that were building cabinets, the young men and women building cabinets, you have to order your materials ahead of time. You have to know everything that you need to order, because they give you what you're going to build. You don't go there with the intention of what you're going to build. Um, and you have to be as accurate as possible, because that's what a lot, you are scored on. If you order too much in materials, you're downgraded. If you don't order enough, your project isn't completed. Um, so I learned even more this year than I did last year. But I just have to share a sad story as well. Um, and I shared it with the Commissioner and Robin as well in an email, that, um, one of the, the things that was going on was called artistic welding. And I don't think I noticed it last year, but I certainly did this year. And I was drawn to all of these, uh, pieces that were welded together, but with art involved with it all. And as I was walking down each of the tables, uh, the second table where there was a young man and a young lady, um, one of the questions I asked after talking about their different pieces, which were just outstanding, um, was, "So what school are you from?" "Anselmo Murna, my alma mater." And so there was this seven degrees of separation or, uh, and then I asked, "So I don't recognize your last name. Can you tell me, you know, if you're from the area, some relatives?" Well, the grandfather ended up being a classmate of mine. And so we really kind of had this connection. I took pictures of him, I sent them to my family to say, "Look who..." Of course, my family at home all knew who these students were. But, um, just last Wednesday, Logan, and they were cousins to boot, uh, Logan, um, lost his life to a gun, uh, by someone else much older. Uh, and he was put to rest last Wednesday. And that was heartbreaking, 'cause I could look at the picture on my camera and see him. But to know about the loss of a life with so much ahead of him, with his abilities, that was hard to think about.
Deb?
I, um, uh, loved going with Lisa and John to the after-school program. Uh, that one was very valuable. But I think the one that had the greatest impact on me, just because I'm a non-teacher, was, uh, the NSCA had a conference on a Friday night about a month ago, and I know Lisa and Patsy and Mo were all there. And, um, you know, first of all, I was entirely blown away that all these teachers who had taught all day long and then drove into Lincoln were in sessions, learning until ten o'clock at night. Um, but I attended three sessions that really were impactful for me, um, by Rachel. Uh, one was on, um, online learning and what that looks like in our schools today. Another one was on, uh, social emotional learning, and I truly valued that. But I think the, the session on chronic absenteeism that was taught by, uh, school, um, members from Westside District and O P S District. And, you know, all that I learned about, you know, how chronic absenteeism isn't something that's just impacting our vulnerable populations. I mean, it's all of our populations and, and how, eh, we need to get more information out there so that families understand what the research is now showing about so many days of missed school and the direct correlation to how it's impacting test scores negatively. And so those were really valuable sessions, so thank you.
Thank you, Deb. I had the opportunity to join the N D E team in reviewing Bellevue University's progress in establishing their new School of Education for teachers. Bellevue is very, very excited and is very enthusiastic about this program that they're building. This is my third visit with Bellevue in the past three years in regards to, if you will, observing and, if you will, watching their progress, building their school. Bellevue's putting a lot, a lot of investment, money, and resources. They have great expectations for their School of Education, so good luck to them. They're recruiting students now, they've already got it going, so, uh, good luck Bellevue University. Commissioner?
Yeah, and I, I just wanna, um, maybe kind of highlight just, uh, in part, one of my hopes and goals. Uh, and I started to work on it, uh, with all of you. I had the chance to, to tour a few schools with Robin. My, like, that got me thinking, it's like, wouldn't it be great to spend the day, uh, with each board member in schools in, of your selection, really? Um, and so we had a chance to, to be out in Scotts Bluff together, or Garing, I actually should say, uh, for an early childhood event, but gave us a chance to, to visit, uh, Garing and Scotts Bluff High Schools. We went to Minotair, uh, and to Garden County and to Paxton. And, and, uh, really, it was a great trip. I mean, I actually learned a lot. I mean, topics that, I mean, certainly a lot around career education, the differences between, uh, smaller schools and larger schools. And in, in fairly close proximity, I mean, there were some themes, I think, that really came out of that. The, the dynamics of remoteness, even the FCC, uh, around education broadband was one of the conversations we had with a group of students at Garden County High School about whether or not they had access at home. So that was a great experience. Um, I think, uh, I forget which order it was in now, but I know Patsy and I, uh, also went to, uh, three schools of her selection here. Um, Elliott Elementary, uh, right, right close, not far from our building here at all, which was just a great visit to see that elementary with, with certainly a lot of, uh, diversity and, and, uh, English learners, but I mean, fantastic if, if, uh, those are really exemplify great practices there and great, and great leadership from that level. And then we got a chance to go on to, um, Northeast High School and also to Waverly. And I think in both cases, both viewing high schools, again, very different, uh, circumstances, but also kind of with leadership transitions in place. And they really got me thinking about, just the theme that hit me was the importance of leadership and making a real difference, uh, in, in schools. And got to see a brand-new principal and a retiring principal that had come back and served in an interim role, uh, in, in that particular case. So I think that was great. And then Rachel and I, uh, had the opportunity to, to tour three schools in her area. Went to Fremont and went to Washington Elementary. Uh, we went to, uh, Logan View, uh, to tour there, and also, uh, went to North Bend. And really, the theme that we had in, in those places were communities impacted by the flood and the various stories that, that were associated with that. And so, um, and meaningful, we, you know, I hope to tell a few of those stories, really submit some inspirational things that I think our educational, uh, leaders have done, that educators did in, in moments in time. And, uh, again, those were just, just the, certainly that one was set up with that, very much that intention. But I look forward just honestly, so I, I kinda give this as a, be thinking of places you'd like me to go. I know next fall, when, when school's in order, I'll try to get to, uh, the rest. I know next fall, when, when school's in order, I'll try to get to the rest of your districts to spend a little bit of that time and, but I, I actually found that very meaningful and it was a great, great experience. Robin got to spend a little more time with me, because we were driving a lot, but...
You're a lucky man.
What I, what I will say is, it gave us, I mean, it really did give us a good chance to kind of see different places and, you know, when you're traveling that far, you know, the diversity that we have for, for other reasons. And I think, you know, I already told Patsy, I said, "Yeah, I got to make good. I'm, I'm all about equity, my equity lens." So Patsy, I got to spend a whole nother day with Patsy, just because I spent two with Robin, so we'll, we'll work on all those things. Like be thinking about that and I, I'll try to...
And I don't sleep in the car.
Oh, then I told on Robin and you told...
You sleep in the car?
Well, if you had to listen to me all day.
I lost my cellphone. That's a whole nother story.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Few stories. I will tell none of them now.
Thank you.
No, so thanks a lot. And just, just look forward to those other opportunities, too.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, everybody, for... Tomorrow, we will vote on requests to approve attendance at meetings that took place in the past and were not previously approved. There are three members requesting meeting approvals. The requests for future meeting attendance travel from board members are linked in the Spark Meetings. Tomorrow, we will approve the board request for meeting attendance. The monthly board travel expense report is attached in Spark Meetings for your review. And lastly, adjournment, the regularly scheduled meeting of the State Board of Education will reconvene tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. in this room. Thank you very much. What?
I have one message from Rachel.